Good evening, welcome to tonight's board meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. I have to explain something to you first. We have a student from Lincolnshire Elementary School, Livy Johnson, a fourth grade student, who's supposed to lead us in the pledge and so forth. We just heard that 70 is a parking lot, so we don't know if she's, if she and her parents are stuck there. We do know that her principal, Mr. Hayde, is stuck in traffic on 70 and so forth. So, we're gonna start with the pledge in a moment of silence, and then when she arrives, wherever, whenever she arrives, we're gonna stop the meeting, let her say the pledge, and talk to her like we normally would, and so forth. So, I hope you indulge us in that this evening. So, if you will please rise, by the way, we do have a quorum. If you'll please rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Alrighty. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. Second?
Second.
I didn't hear you. Any? Discussion or anything? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Six oh, student member concurs. Now the approval of the minutes.
Vice President Stauffer, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, March 7th, 2023.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's six oh.
Vice President Stauffer, I move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, March 7th, 2023.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh, student member concurs. And without further ado, we'll go straight to the superintendent's report. Have a lot of students to recognize this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer and members of the board. Yes, indeed, we have a number of students to recognize. Today is the first day of spring sports competition, and before that season gets underway, we would like to recognize student athletes who took home first place in the state, state competition for, for winter sports. Eric Michael, our supervisor of athletics, health, and physical education, will join us now to introduce our state champion athletes in wrestling and indoor track.
Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce our state champions. We had a very successful winter season, and as Dr. Savan just stated, we finished about two weeks ago, and today's the first day of spring sports. So, again, you're gonna meet all of our state champions tonight for our winter season. Gonna start tonight for wrestling, we had two individual champions in wrestling. First up is Amelia Micus. Amelia was the 1A, 2A, 135-pound champion from Boonsborough High School. And for those who don't know, a few years back, wrestling is now divided into two, there's coed, which are generally the boys, and then they have a girls' tournament as well. Proud to announce that Amelia is the first girls' champion at Boonsborough High School. And next up is Aiden Hastings from Williamsport High School. Aiden was the 1A, 2A champion in the 195-pound class. Aiden was, was at the states last year as a freshman, he's a sophomore this year, and improved his standing by winning a state championship. This is Aiden's first championship. Aiden Hastings. And that is our wrestling champions. And now let's switch over to the track. This year, we were very happy to announce we had a team champion. The Smithburg High School girls' indoor track team was the 1A state champions this year. I'm going to announce the names, and girls, when I announce your name, come forward. Some of the girls are not here tonight, as we said, it's the opening night of spring sports, so some of them are on the field tonight. First up, we have Amelia Beck Schmider. And Michaela Rose. And then Emma Joya. Alex Spithaller. And as I announce the remaining girls, they also are individual champions, so I'm gonna announce what they were individual champions in when I announce their name. Grace Ellis is not with us tonight, but Grace was the 500-meter run champion this year. And the next four girls are part of a winning championship relay team. First up, Coral Gensel, and they're four-by-800-meter relay champions. As I announce Taylor, Taylor actually was part of two relay champions. So, Taylor King, four-by-800-meter relay champion, and four-by-200-meter relay champion. Ella Fisher. Ella Fisher was also part of four-by-800-meter relay. And then Kayla Hallbacher, also part of the four-by-800-meter relay championship. And then the next three are part of the four-by-200-meter relay championship. First up, Jenna Howe. Amanda Hallbacher is not here tonight with us, but also a four-by-200-meter relay champion. And then Trinity Green, four-by-200-meter relay champion. Our head coach is Mr. Adam Rudy. And assistant coaches, Stacy Crawford. And Ray Shriver. And the girls, this was a pretty dominant performance. They won by over 40 points at the championships, that's a lot in tracks. So, congratulations on 1A girls' indoor track champion. And our last group this evening is also indoor track, they're individual champions from this past season. First up, we're gonna start with the girls' indoor track individual champions. First, we have Caroline Matthews. Caroline is from Boonsborough High School, she is the 1A 3200-meter run champion. This is her second time winning this, as she was a champion last year, her junior year. So, congratulations Caroline. Next up, we have Jocelyn Folds. Jocelyn is from Hancock High School. She is the 1A shot put champion. Jocelyn, this is her first championship, and if I remember right, she won on her last throw. So, great job. Congratulations. Now for the boys. First up is Cameron Rajonis. Cameron has two championships. Cameron was the 1A 500-meter run champion and the 800-meter run champion this year. In case you're not sure, he is from Smithburg High School. Couple notes worth, worth speaking about Cameron. Cameron is a senior this year. He is a two-time 500-meter champion, won last year, and then again this year. He is a three-time 800-meter champion. He won his freshman year, COVID knocked him out, we did not have the meet his sophomore year. He won his junior year, and then he won again this year. So, pretty, pretty good accomplishment. And the last, last thing I'll say is with that last championship, he tied for, he has eight championships, eight state championships, which ties him for the most in Washington County history.
Wow.
So, next up, we have Jacob Faith. Jacob is from Clear Spring High School. He was the 1A high jump champion. He participated, I believe he participated last year and improved on that by winning a championship, and it's a second championship for high jump in a row for Clear Spring High School. And last, we have Ethan Van Meter. Ethan is the, from South Hagerstown High School, is the 3A shot put champion. Ethan had a very successful winter season. He basically had a clean sweep. He was the county champion, he was the CMC, which is Central Maryland Conference champion, region champion, and state champion with a throw of over 50 feet. I don't know exactly in terms of inches, but his throw placed him fourth overall in all the classifications in the state of Maryland. So, congratulations. And that's our indoor track champions.
This evening, we will also honor outstanding students in the arts. March is national music in our schools month and National Youth Art Month. I'll turn it over now to Micah Socks, our supervisor of visual and performing arts. He will help us recognize our student musicians and performers who participated in state ensembles, and we also have a student artist who earned an achievement in a state art contest.
Good evening, Dr. Savan, Vice President Stauffer, and members of the board. Tonight, we would like to recognize March as national music in our schools month and Youth Art Month by honoring our students who achieved at the state level in their arts discipline. Maryland All-State concerts were held on March 5th as part of the Maryland Music Educators Convention in Baltimore. Students in grades seven through nine may audition for the junior ensembles, and students in grades 10 through 12 are eligible for the senior ensembles. These students auditioned against thousands of students from across the state, and earning that all-state designation, designation is really quite an achievement. We'll begin with recognizing senior band Wesley Blood from Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. For junior chorus, Canell Austin from Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. David Monroy from Barbara Ingram. Madeline Roulette from Barbara Ingram. For senior chorus, these students are from Barbara Ingram. Winston Estelle. Claire Freeman, now Claire also was selected for the All-National Choir. Lauren Gunther. Andrew Halverson. Olivia Lopez. Mitchell Parmally, and Mitchell was also selected for the All-National Choir. Nicholas Smith. Riley Wortman. Kendall Whittington. And from South Hagerstown High School, Molly Clark. Also from South High, Lakin Wright. For junior orchestra, we have Annika English from North Hagerstown High School. Senior orchestra, Ephon Zhang from North Hagerstown High School. For the first time in many, many years, we have a student in the senior jazz band. They take one bass player from across the state, and we have Brady Myers from Barbara Ingram. And we also have a, an all-state dance student this year from Barbara Ingram, Nathaniel Ferguson.
Can you see?
I can't.
Can you find the window?
Yes. There we go.
And each year, MSDE, along with the Maryland Developmental Disabilities Council, the Maryland Department of Disabilities, and the Arts Maryland sponsor, the Together We're Better Art Contest. So, we would also like to recognize Maggie from Cascade Elementary, who won first place in that state contest. She was honored on February 22nd in Annapolis for this achievement, and her artwork was just up there, yes. So, congratulations again to these talented students, and a big thank you to the amazing teachers who helped prepare them.
Alright, I see that our pledge of allegiance leader has arrived. Were you caught on 70? Yeah. That's bad. She's a fourth grade student at Lincolnshire, and I didn't have a chance to talk to you ahead of time. I'm gonna guess it is Livy. Okay. Livy Johnson, and she will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then we're gonna talk to her a little bit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a cheat sheet up here, Livy. Would you like to introduce us to those who have accompanied you tonight?
My mom, my dad, and my principal, Mr. Hayde.
Okay, alright, thank you for coming here. Understand you have a sister and a brother, or are they younger, older?
Older.
Pardon me?
Older.
Older. So, you're the baby of the family. Yeah, I know what that's like. You love to dance, and you create dances?
Sometimes.
What kind of dances? Tap dancing, what? Modern dance? I'm not a dance aficionado, so I don't know what I'm talking about.
I do acrobatics, flexibility, cheer tumble, and pop jazz.
And understand you're also an artist, and you taught yourself to draw? What kind of things do you draw?
People.
Pardon me?
People.
Okay, people. You're really good at it, so you do portraits and so forth? Alright. Says you're outgoing and adventurous, how adventurous are you? What's the biggest adventure you've, you've done?
What are your favorite?
For wild animals?
Float trips.
Yeah, I heard her.
Yeah.
And I see that you love to ask questions about anything. So, you're one of these 20-question kids, huh? Okay, so you probe a great deal. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask us? No? And you're an acting participant in the gate program? Okay. What, what's your favorite subject? And don't say math, because I don't want Prue back there raising his hand.
Go for math.
Whatever it is.
You can say it.
Reading.
Reading, good, good. I love to read too. Read every night before I fall asleep. Alright. And says you love to think outside the box. Any particular thing you like to think about outside the box?
No.
No? What's something that you've come up with from talking, or from thinking outside the box? You're playing shy on us tonight, big time here. Mom, Dad, can you tell us anything?
Um, I make videos. I make videos.
Makes videos.
Makes videos.
You make videos?
Like animation videos.
Oh, that's cool. Animation videos.
Yeah, I heard that, yeah, wow. So, there's a lot of things you could do for a career, especially with art, game creation, things like that. So, one last thing, and then I'm gonna shut up and let my board members ask things. Looking down the road, where do you see yourself doing, say, when you get to high school? Would you go to Tech High and take up video game creation? A lot of money in that.
No.
Colleagues?
What would you like to do?
As, as you get older, is there a career that you, a career path? What would you like?
To be a dance teacher.
Nice.
Nice.
Dance teacher?
Dance.
Yes!
Dance teacher. Good for you, good for you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. You're my first English teacher wannabe.
She didn't say, she said dance.
Oh, damn. I like that too.
Anybody else, anyone else? No?
Thank you for coming.
Well, Livy, thank you for coming here this evening and appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, I'm failing over 70 and making it.
Okay, we'll now move on to a public comment. I'll read this. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. And here's my timekeeper tonight. Mrs. Murray, would you like to explain that?
Yes. When you're down to 30 seconds, I will hold this up. That tells you it's time to wrap it up and when you're done, I will hold this up.
Okay, we've had four people who have signed up ahead of time. The first one on the list is Lisa Rhodes, so if you would come forward.
I would ask to make copies for everyone in the room.
Okay. Yes.
Yes. Hi, my name is Lisa Rhodes. I am the facilitator of a peer support group called Save Our Children. I began the Hagerstown Maryland group in October of 2021. Over 1,200 people have come through our doors since this group began. People were desperately seeking help, not only for themselves, but for their loved ones who struggle with our substance abuse issue that's going on right now in our world today, whether it be drugs or alcohol. My topic of concern today is for our students' school health and substance abuse disorder. Family members in our community are struggling with substance abuse. The opioid crisis is at an all-time high. It is sweeping our nation and impacting our children and as a result, our children are suffering. Children are coming to school hungry with little or no sleep. Their minds are filled with fear, anxiety, stress, depression, and the list goes on. If I may share one example without mentioning names, there was two schoolchildren in our community and they were not permitted to exit their school bus because no one in their house was able to get them off the bus. You see the people inside, they were all under the influence of substance abuse. The two children, also other additional two children, excuse me, were also in the house and they were under three years of age. There was no food in the home and they were living in unsanitary conditions. This unfortunate circumstance warranted a phone call to Child Protective Services. Unfortunately CPS would not get involved. Unless a child has ingested the drugs resulting in a hospital visit or fatality, there's nothing that CPS would do and I highly disagree with this. But my greatest concern is the number of students that we have in our school system that are currently suffering from substance abuse and their lack of knowledge and education about the crisis has already led to overdoses within our schools right here in Washington County. It is heartbreaking when we lose someone to drugs and alcohol and I know this firsthand. I lost my only brother last May to the opioid crisis. When someone you love struggles with drugs or alcohol, the entire family suffers. I know the school board cannot be responsible for every family out there and I agree with that, for what they face and what they're going through, but I do believe that our children in our schools deserve from us, the community, its resources, and our school board to provide them with the proper education pertaining to good health and teaching them the dangers of substance abuse. I would like to see education taught to all of our students and to all of our staff members within our schools, educating them on the severity and the dangers of alcohol and drugs, teaching them how it impacts our health, how it destroys our lives, how it robs us of ambitions, goals, and robs us of our identity. I would like to see Narcan training provided for all students and staff as well. And according to the CDC, from March 2021 to March 2022, 109,000 overdoses have been reported. Opioid addiction is the biggest drug epidemic in history and I can promise you this, it will only get worse before it gets better. We have to acknowledge this problem before we can deal with the problem. The sooner we deal with it, the more manageable it will be. The worst thing anyone could do is sweep this under the rug, minimize the situation, or overlook its severity. Our children's lives are at stake. I would only hope and pray that our school board would act quickly upon this matter by allowing educated resources into our schools to help save our children. I have attached three questions to my presentation that I gave and to the lady up here and I have an email address on there as well. And the three questions that I had asked was, is Narcan available in every classroom of our schools? What protocol is the, is in place for our students that do overdose? And what services are available for the students who are affected by witnessing or hearing about the school overdoses? If there's no time permitted here today, you may feel free to email your answers to what I have assigned on the agenda. Thank you very much for letting me share.
Thank you. Next, and I'm just gonna guess his first name, Corinne? Is that correct?
Karen.
Karen, okay, all right. My wife's name's Karen, but it's not spelled that way, so. Corinne Miller, okay, thank you.
Karen Miller.
Karen Miller.
Karen.
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 Yeah.
Thank you all for allowing us to come tonight. My name is Karen Miller. My son is in recovery from a six-year heroin addiction. I'm following up with Lisa. She and I are partners in crime. We support the community however we can because there's a little lack of resources and services in the state, so. My husband of 40 years has had struggles with opioids for 23 years and the, back in the day, the treatment was so laps, lapsing in our community that it was difficult for him to find any kind of help. Both of my son and my husband are in recovery one day at a time. My husband's in recovery five years and my son is in recovery 10 years. Unfortunately, we lost my nephew as a direct result of opioid use disorder. If you're not familiar with that term, it's just what we call drug addiction to opioids. I'm here tonight hoping to educate and support others so that they don't have to live the trauma my family has. Our children are suffering in so many ways, peer pressure, bullying, substance use in the homes, physical and mental abuse. Let's work together to support these children who are suffering. The Phoenix Recovery Academy in Frederick has a great model the public schools could review. I provided the website on your copies there. I am founder and co-facilitator of Save Our Children. I started this 13 years ago. There was such a need for families to find support and answers about what was going on with their children. So many families suffer with addiction and all sadness and madness that goes along with it and I can tell you there's so much trauma in my head due to the many years of opioid use disorder in my home. I moved up here from Montgomery County thinking I was gonna raise my kids in this rural, nice, rural, nice little community and boy, did it hit us heavy. They, we found help through support of others and that's why I started the support group. I've served thousands of members over the years. In 13 years, if she had 1,200 come through hers since 2021, you can imagine how many people who have come through my doors. I really didn't keep track all these years, but I stay busy answering the phone and helping families. I also co-founded a nonprofit organization called Maryland Heroin Awareness Advocates and we help people with addictions in their families and we supply food, clothing, short-term housing, dental needs, and transportation. We have also paid for funerals and helped pay for funerals. We pay to maintain three billboards in Frederick County and I brought pictures of those and I'll show those to the audience if that's okay. Our children are at severe risk of falling into addiction due to lack of education in the home and at school. We need to provide awareness campaigns and school presentations. We need to talk about it with the students in real time. So many kids are prescribed dangerous prescription drugs and then worse to see the street synthetic fentanyl and the xylazine, which is fairly new coming out. And I just did an interview this morning on ABC about xylazine. And if nobody knows what it is, it, it's an animal tranquilizer and they're putting it in the children's drugs and, and they're, they're coloring it pink and purple and blue. And, and what's a child gonna think when they see that? Oh, it's like candy. And then they could die from that. The DEA says the, this drug is for veterinary use only, not for human consumption. We have to protect our children by providing truthful, real-life education on this subject. We can't sugarcoat this. A study done by the Maryland Center of Excellence on Problem Gambling states that kids video gaming have higher risk of addiction due to isolation, the time spent, repetitiveness, and lack of social skills. Hancock Middle School, Hancock Middle Senior High School invited me three years in a row to go out there and do presentations and when I'm done with my presentation, I'm gonna read you some of the index cards of the, what the children wrote to me. As you can see over there by my purse, I have stacked this, this thick, so I don't have time to read all of those, but I think you, if you'd like, I can make copies for you. We, we were able to bring the health department in. We had people in recovery who came and, oh shoot, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
So, thank you. So, it was very impactful to be able to go to the high school and the middle school and even the elementary school had me come in and it was just in, in the auditorium and I had so many comments. I had one young lady that came to me and said, Mrs. Miller, I'm so glad that you came out today because my dad died from a heroin overdose. And so, it was so impactful that, for them to hear real life. Stigma is the culprit here. We need to break the stigma. Individuals trying to seek recovery get judged and discriminated against and it's just a horrible thing to see these people that I work with every day begging for treatment and begging for help. They don't wanna be like this. They're good people with a bad disease. And it's really dear to my heart. Not only have I seen so many deaths, but we just need to save our children. You know, thank you for taking our comments into consideration. Do I have time to read five little cards? This one says, this was the only, this was the only drug awareness assembly that didn't feel like a total waste of time, so you know it was impactful. I thought that addicts were bad people and I judged them, but I learned not to today. Thank you for letting me know how much this thing, that anything can change my life forever. I understood how this hurts not only yourself, but your family. Thanks for opening the community's eyes to this subject. With my mom being in recovery, this touched my heart knowing just how serious this issue really is. Made me realize not to be ashamed of family and friends. I thought you were only an addict when you were using drugs. Now I know you are an addict forever. And these are three, which I can share with you in an email. These are from the elementary, the, the middle school children. Thank you for, thank you for my lateness. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I pass these around for the audience? And then arrange for you and you can use your copies.
Next is, and I'm gonna guess at this last name, but so I hope I pronounce it correctly. Bethany Applequist? Is that good? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Bethany Applequist. I am the pastor of St. John's United Church of Christ in Clear Spring, which is located just a half a mile from Clear Spring High School. You may be thinking, why is a pastor speaking to us about a band program? Great question, thank you for asking. I am here because my job is not all that different than your jobs. We are all entrusted with the care, well-being, and flourishing of our communities. My community, of course, is St. John's and yours, of course, is the students, faculty, and staff of Washington County Public Schools. And I believe that you would agree that we are not just charged with the care, wellness, and flourishing of our direct communities, but that we have jobs that have a wider reach, that we are responsible for more than just those who walk through our doors. We have a responsibility to the flourishing of our wider community and that is why I'm here to you, before you this evening, because I believe that such a dramatic cut to the Clear Spring Band Program is a threat to the care, wellness, and flourishing of the entire Clear Spring and Washington County communities and even far beyond that. One thing you should know about me is that while I love music, I do not have a musical bone in my body. My singing and musical skills have been described as off-key, not very good, and hard to listen to. Because I do not have the gift of music, I rely heavily on the musical skills of others. At my church, we have one paid, part-time musician, who by the way, is a graduate of Clear Spring High School. All of our other musicians, people who play instruments in our services, people who sing in the choir, who sing solos for special services, are non-paid, non-professional musicians. In fact, most of those who participate in the music at my church are people who took a few music classes such as band in high school and are using the skills they learned from playing an instrument, reading music, watching a conductor, and performing in front of, from their high school musical educations. In fact, many of those who sing at the choir at St. John's are graduates of Clear Spring High School who benefited greatly from their music arts education at Clear Spring. When we think of the scope of making significant cuts to a music program such as the ones proposed to the Clear Spring Band, one might think that it has an effect on a handful of students for four years of their lives and this is true. It will have an effect on their high school experiences and education. And I know some students here are to tell, are here to tell you about that tonight, but I think that the scope and effects of such cut, cuts are wider reaching than that. A threat to music and arts programs is a threat to the well-being and flourishing of the entire Clear Spring community. As a pastor, I rely on non-professional musicians who learned music, education in high school to help my community thrive. But it's not just churches that rely on non-professional musicians and artists. All nonprofits, civic organizations, community groups, and countless others rely on them. And to bring it closer to home, how many of your own educators use music in their classrooms? Likely many of them do and they too are not professional musicians. They are people who took band and other music classes in high school and remember enough to use as teachers. Music and the arts permeate all parts of a community. Music makes communities better, it brings them together. I fear that by moving forward with such drastic cuts to the band program, the band program will suffer greatly and along with that, the entire community of Clear Spring will suffer. Many of the graduates of Clear Spring High School will stay in the Clear Spring community. They will be the ones to offer their gifts, talents, and skills to the Clear Spring community in the future. Although Clear Spring is one of the smaller towns in Washington County, we deserve just as much as bigger towns and bigger cities to have talented, talented residents in the future who have skills that a robust band education provides. I believe that each of you are like me. You want to see your community thrive. You want 10 years down the road for churches to have choirs, for kids to have teachers that use music in the classrooms. You want nonprofits, civic organizations, and community groups to have musicians and artists when they need them. I know that budget cuts are hard on everyone, but I urge you to consider the long-lasting impacts that such drastic cuts will have and consider working with the students, band director, and band boosters to come up with an alternative plan that helps keep this important band program thriving. And by working together, I... And by working together, I do believe that you can be a part of creating a Clear Spring community that flourishes for many generations to come. Thank you.
I am Brooks Myers. I'm a freshman at Clear Spring High School. I had many options as to what schools I was able to go to in Washington County. I chose Clear Spring because I have been playing football in Clear Spring since the third grade. I was thinking of not doing band because I did not know if there were any other people like me who played football and also did band. But when I went to choose my classes, I asked the school counselor if there were any other football players who were a part of the band. I was pleasantly surprised to find out that there were two other football players who did band. I did band because of this. I did not want to be the only football player in band, so this made me feel at ease. The week that band camp started, the two football players helped me make new friends. Also, during the first day of band camp, I got to talk to the band director. She seemed to understand that this year was a big transition for me, moving from a private middle school to a public high school. She eased me into how to march and helped me improve my playing skills as she helped me learn the music. She was so patient with me during the first week of school. It was the first game week, and it was a home game, so the band director had been asking the football coach if she could borrow us band football players to go over our field show, and our football coach said yes. She had asked us to be there Thursday at 6:30, but our coach didn't let us out of practice till 7:00. We quickly ran to the locker room, got changed, put our instruments together for rehearsal, and we ran out with our instruments to meet the band director. At this point, it was 7:15, and rehearsal ended at 7:30. The band director was so patient and understanding about the situation that she asked the whole band if anyone could stay after to help us with the field show. The whole band stayed after and worked with us. This little action made me feel very appreciative and included. Frankly, if it weren't for the amazing connections and support I felt from the band, I would have more than likely gone back to my private school. Band brings people together, quiet people, loud people, smart people, and those who may struggle. I know you say 90 minutes a day is enough time for a teacher to dedicate themselves both to the high school and band and orchestra, but I would respectfully disagree. It's not just about my band teacher staying after regularly to help me include in my friends who play football. It's about the additional classes students will miss out on and the overall support we are given. You say you are having another teacher instruct the classes that will be cut without our full-time band director, but that is not true. My friends and other students will miss out on AP Music Theory, Theater, Music Studio, and potentially a variety of ensembles. Also, our current teacher juggles a couple classes each period to accommodate the schedule of her students and to allow us every opportunity she can provide. In case you didn't know, the current band director has been nominated for Teacher of the Year for several years and by many students. Please do not take our full band director away, full-time band director away. There is more of an impact within the entire school than you would ever understand. Your budget is so big, and our school has been through a lot this year. Please reconsider.
That's all the speakers who have signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and talk? Please come.
Good evening, distinguished board members, educators, parents, and students. My name is Michael Johnson, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am presently retired, serving as Vice Mayor of the community of Clear Spring. And what seems to be a long time ago, I was a proud member of the Blazer Band. Hopefully, my little rant tonight does not sound like glory days. I'm not Bruce Springsteen up here. Speaking for the mayor and council of Clear Spring, the Blazer Band is considered to be proud ambassadors of our small rural community of Clear Spring. And when they are invited to participate in parades, shows, and events outside of our town, our county, and our state, we are on someone's radar, which is very rare for Clear As a Blazer Band member, I have been witness to history. In 1973, our band participated in the inauguration parade for Richard Nixon. We saw Richard Nixon go down Pennsylvania Avenue. How many people see that? As a 10th grader, we were invited to the Kentucky Derby. As a senior, we went back as the honor band. We were in the infield. We got to see history again. We saw Secretariat win the first leg of the...
Triple Crown.
Triple Crown. Thank you.
Nothing again.
Subpar bands do not get invited to these events. The only reason we were invited to this, we had a dedicated band instructor, we had the time and sectionals in the small groups. I think they call them ensembles right now. I'm not sure what the terminology. We were able to hone our skills. We did not take up the rest of the band, especially me. I played an instrument. I did not make music, but I played an instrument, and I enjoyed myself. And another thing that's probably a little personal with that, this is nothing reflecting on any educators. I hated school from kindergarten to the time I graduated. The girl I dated when I was graduate, when I graduated walked down the alley. She said, "All your friends were crying," and I had the biggest smile on my face, because I was glad to get out of school. I probably would've dropped out of school if not for soccer. I know Stan was a soccer player, soccer coach. If it wouldn't have been for soccer and the band, I would've probably been a dropout. So, being Vice Mayor, I meant, I realized there's budgetary considerations. And, you know, budgets are budgets. I don't know what, it's a tough answer. But I think we can find somewhere, and I know we're concentrating on band right now because I consider band as investment not to, not only to the students, but as recognition to our town. And, you know, like I said, we're band-focused, I'm band-focused right now, but we're also losing, I think I understand, we're losing some other educators in our school also. I was glad to see, this is a music arts appreciation night. That was grand. Great work for all those students. But majority of them were Barbara Ingham. Two from north, two from south. Where were the rural schools? Are we going to continue to cut and the rural schools slowly pass away? I'd hate to see that, because there's a lot of pride in bands that communities receive. So, my time's done. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
My name is Ethan Lowen, and I was just listening to the other speakers, and particularly the first two women who spoke about the group that they run that deals with the drug addictions. And it struck a chord with me, just because the next 24 hours of my life are gonna involve, one, right after this, I'm going to see a dear friend of mine in a hospital who, lifelong drug addict, head of a, of an addictions group in his community. He was in the NBA at one point in time, and during his worst times of addiction, he, and he's told this story publicly many times himself, he would actually rob drug dealers for a living. And that is not the worst it got for him either. And then tomorrow night, I'll be spending about an hour and a half speaking to a group just about addictions and how, and how it affects their lives, et cetera. So, I'm not associated with the two women that spoke earlier in any way. But what really comes out of what they were saying is that the desperate need that the community has, and the children in our schools have, to actually have this issue dealt with positively, dealt with effectively, because it's very ineffective the way it is. But I mean, let's face it, the drug addictions have been growing like a stage-four cancer in our community, our society, in our schools for decades now, and it isn't being dealt with effectively. So, you know, what, what, yes, you know, I like the way that they portrayed it as the, they mentioned that drug addicts are not necessarily bad people, but not being bad people doesn't mean that there aren't things that need to happen in order to make the situation better. And so, one thing that needs to happen is it's not about making people feel guilty or making children feel guilty for the struggles they have or the struggles their family has, but there does come a point where we actually need to allow individuals that are doing things that they can't, that are not sustainable for either themselves or the people around them, to face the consequences of their actions and to, and to just understand that life is gonna go on, and they're gonna have to, and they're gonna have to face the consequences of what they're doing is resulting in. And, and when I look at the schools, there's a huge failing in the schools. And it's not, okay, well, you know, we need more social-emotional learning programs. We need more school counselors. No. You know, we have a school that, that deals with troubled youth, you know, called the Antietam Academy. We have many troubled youth in our schools. It's like half-full. How many more people, how many more students could be in there getting the help that they need as opposed to being left in the schools terrorizing fellow students and teachers not getting the help that they need? You know, there was an issue a couple, three weeks ago where, where, you know, there was a middle school where I believe two children overdosed in the same day, same school. In that exact same day, two different students attacked a police officer in the school. And, and the response, when the teachers' union was asked about it, apparently the response in the newspaper was, "Well, everyone has a bad day." That, that's not acceptable. That makes the situation worse. That increases the drug trade in our schools. And, and so, we can't have the attitude of, "Okay, we've got, we've got half the Antietam Academy full. Well, okay, whatever. We'll leave the kids in the schools." No. No. No, people don't have bad days. People need help, but they need help not just through feeling good. They need help through actual help, even in the form of consequences. And just allowing students to remain in the school that routinely are harming others and are harming themselves in the process is an unacceptable solution. So, so I'd ask that we use the resources that we have, but we also be very realistic and with the community and honest with the community, because let's face it, we have certain schools in our county where the drug trade in those schools is greater than the drug trade in the community itself. And our, we have communities where, where crime is being brought into the community through what is being learned in our schools. You know, there's an element of that, and we need to be realistic about that. So, so I definitely wanna support what they said. The last thing is with the other group that continues to defend the importance of music programs, those are the sorts of things that give kids the way out. You know, when people realize and they reach their bottom, okay, they need to get out, where's the light? You know what the light is? The light is the positive programs, like music programs, that, that reach into the soul and bring something out more positively. And cutting those out of the community makes everything worse that we're talking about. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come up? Okay, we'll now have board member comment to public comment.
Yeah, mine's more of a question, I guess, for Dr. Savine, and maybe you don't know the answer since you're pretty new here as well, but I know when I was growing up, we, we had the DARE program in our schools. I don't even know if that's still an option or available or anything like that. I think that would be a, a great way to help the law enforcement in the community kind of build relationships with some of these kids and, and also, you know, portray a strong message. Is that something we can look into? Is that something you know anything about, or?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Excuse me. We do have programs, elementary, middle, and high school. Typically, it's through our health classrooms at the elementary level. It occurs in the regular classrooms regarding awareness programs and prevention programs. I would like to invite Dr. Willow Ford, who's in position to speak to, more specifically, to the curriculum structure that is in place and the training that we provide to our staff members as well as our students.
Good evening. Dr. Savine is spot-on. We start as early as kindergarten with health curriculum. Oftentimes, that's within the physical education classroom. So, again, it's grade-appropriate. For kindergarten, for example, the topics that we start are medicines in your household and the dangers of what to do, identifying different types of medicines, things like that. And then, as we work our way up to high school, obviously, the topics change and become much more, I'm gonna say, real-world involvement, real-life involvement, based on, again, the appropriate age groups. We do offer training throughout the summer and throughout the school year for our staff. That is open, actually, to all staff. Those are, so you don't have to be a physical education teacher or a health teacher to have access to that staff. Our can training is available. I know that was a comment that is, has been brought up, and it is also in our schools. With that being said, we are working as a team with school principals to look at, are there assemblies, guest speakers, other topics, things that we can do to enhance the curriculum, you know, through, and again, I think one of the speakers tonight mentioned that she had the ability to present at Hancock three years in a row. You will see that principals work closely with counselors and others within the building to arrange those types of presentations. We also work closely with the Washington County Health Department. We have something called the Student Assistance Program that is sometimes referred to as SAP. Those are anonymous referrals that students, staff can make. We bring the health department in. We work closely with parents to ensure that when we suspect a student might be using, that the parents are aware of the different services through the health department that they can access as well.
Thank you, Dr. Lowen. And that, I was kinda...
And that's, that's all great. I'm happy to hear all that. I'm, I'm just kinda thinking, you know, the assemblies are great, you know, to, to reach large portions of the, of the community, but, you know, sometimes it seems like there might be a better bang for your buck if you could even get in a smaller setting like a classroom. That's kinda why I was thinking, you know, like a police officer being able to come in and, and, you know, kinda, kinda talk about some of the stuff that they see as well.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. You raise a good point, and certainly assemblies do have their place, but when you, when principals are in a situation where they have to balance instructional time and then a one-time event sometimes are not always impactful, whereas if it's in a smaller classroom setting, whether it be a health classroom or elementary classroom, where you have a professional that can come in, provide information, and allow for some Q and A so that it's more meaningful and engaging to those students, that is probably the best practice that is, that is preferred. So, thank you for making that point.
Anyone else? A couple things to Mr. Myers, the young gentleman from Clear Spring. I'm very glad to hear that your football coach allowed you guys to go out to band. When I was a soccer coach at Williamsport, I had kids in the band, and I used to work with the band director at that time, Suzie Cockle, whose husband was longtime band director and soccer coach at Clear Spring High School. We'd get together when I'd get my schedule. "All right, what band events do you have?" Of course, in those days, there wasn't a competition every weekend where you went and did field shows, so that wasn't, it was mainly parades. But there would be times when I, she, I would say, "Well, I got five band members," and I, she'd say, "Well..." she'd say, well, what are we going to do? And I'd say, well, I need these two guys. It was unfair. I hated to do it. But I'd say, I need these two guys. They're starters. These three, the opponent we're playing probably aren't going to get in the game unless we get lucky and blow them out. So I was glad to see that. Plus, I would have show choir guys come to me and say, show choir director says we've got to be there where the grade gets cut. I'd say, hell, missing an hour practice, hour and a half, then gonna make you a better or worse soccer player. So I'm glad to see that the gentleman allowed you to do that. I normally don't say much about this, but there was some misinformation I fear put out here tonight. And maybe I shouldn't say this, but I'm going to. Something about two overdoses at the school, and I'm sure everybody knows what school we're referring to, that wasn't what was reported about those two kids, that they were medical emergencies. And I don't think Mr., I'm not taking it from Mr. Becker, but his comment was not in relationship to that. So I think there was some distorted linkage there tonight from the one speaker about that. Finally, as a school board member, as an adult, as a taxpayer, as a citizen of Washington County, I'm concerned about the fact that this state, and a majority apparently did so, I didn't vote for it, voted in a referendum to legalize recreational marijuana. I have a problem with that. I don't know if I got the details of the bill down correctly, but I did read, I think, where each household's going to be allowed to have two marijuana plants. How in the world are they ever going to control that? And how are they going to? To me, that just puts kids in the home in more danger of getting access to marijuana. Now, some people say marijuana doesn't lead to higher drugs. Well, I remember an experience in the Army where one night, real quick, I was on CQ duty in in-town Gap, Pennsylvania. Our unit was up there for ROTC training to support it. Got a call from a supply sergeant. His supply assistant was threatening him with a knife. It turned out to be a small, small knife, penknife, but still could do some damage. So the next day, the troop commander and I, Captain, Captain Davis and I, went to the post infirmary to see him. He was in the Army, this young man from California, because the judge gave him a choice. Either you can join the Army or you go to jail. And he joined the Army. And he went into Lebanon, Pennsylvania, and he got some heroin, which he said he smoked, and he, that's how he got high. But he started on marijuana at age 12, he said. The poor young man was going to get out of the service and so forth. So I worry about that, and I think every adult in this room ought to be concerned because to me, maybe I'm wrong, it's going to allow more access to drugs for our schoolchildren because of recreational marijuana. So if you want to disagree with me, that's fine, but that's all I've got to say. Thank you. Next up is, she's already up here, our lawyer, our attorney, Ms. Rahm.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Savine, the Board of Education approved the first reading and proposed changes to Policy FF at its Public Business Meeting on March 7, 2023. Following the approval of the first reading, the Policy Committee posted a notice on board docs and the school system's website, seeking comments from stakeholders on the proposed changes. No comments were received. The Policy Committee is now recommending the Board of Education approve the second reading of proposed changes to Policy FF.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the second.
Second reading of proposed changes to Policy FF entitled Naming and Renaming of Facilities and Granting of Naming Rights.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Okay. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Please raise a hand. Okay, six, nothing. Student, member concurs? New business consent agenda?
Good evening, Vice President Stouffer, members of the board. Dr. Savine, tonight I have four items for your review. These items have been reviewed by our Purchasing Review Committee and are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve awards and procurements of roof replacement at Eastern Elementary School to Hydler Roofing Services, Inc. at a cost of $639,762. Roof replacement at Hancock Elementary School to First Line Contracting, Inc. at a cost of $1,074,500. Chromebooks to CDWG at a cost of $3,288,195. An internet service provider to Antietam Broadband at a cost of $118,750.80.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, no questions? All right.
I can ask a question. Can you go, the Chromebooks is quite a big expense, but I understand that we've received some funding to help with that. Could you go through that?
Correct, yeah. And I don't know, there he is. But we are paying for some of that from the ECF, which is the Emergency Connectivity Fund, which is a federal grant, which is about almost 2.7 million of that 3 point, whatever that was, 3.2 million, 3.3 million. So you'll see two different, actually, exhibits. It's all exhibit three, but there's two quotes there. One of them is what's covered under the federal grant and the other out of Joe's general fund, I guess.
Yeah. And just, can you go through how the Chromebooks will be used and what brought about this purchase?
Sure. Good evening, Vice President Stouffer, Dr. Savine, members of the board. Thank you for the question. I'm Joe Allen, Executive Director of Technology. The Chromebooks will be used, so there's a cycle, a refresh cycle, that I outlined in the technology plan last year. So there are about 2,100 Chromebooks that have reached their five-year life at North High School and at Bispa that have to come out. So these will replace those, as well as the other half of the elementary schools will be moving off iPads and moving to Chromebooks. So they'll be getting Chromebooks this year. And then we keep about 5% in reserve for when there's damage or they need to be replaced.
And I remember during the pandemic, it was hard to get your hands on Chromebooks. Has that eased?
It has. It's still a little bit, a little bit difficult, but it definitely eased from those days.
And has pricing reflected that at all?
Well, actually, the price this year went down by a little bit from last year. So, yeah, technology, I hate to say this, but it typically goes down year over year, you know, the cost of a particular item.
Anyone else? Just one thing. The year for the internet service provider, the E-rate, the federal program will reimburse us for 80% of that, $118,000.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, and that was one where we came to the board back almost, I guess, four years ago, and we requested approval for seven gigabyte of service. Now, with the increased demand that, you know, with student devices, we're moving that up to, requesting to move that up to a 10-gig service. So, but all that pricing was set at the bid time when we did that back in 2019, or, yeah, 2019, 2019, yeah.
I have a couple more questions. For the roof replacement at Hancock Elementary, I don't know if that's Mr. Prue or not. I know that, I can't remember the budget year, but the commissioners asked us specifically to fund programs in Hancock and Cascade. Can you, does this satisfy that commitment?
Yes and no. So the Hancock Elementary roof is being funded out of the remaining balance of the allocation provided for the construction of the new Sharpesburg Elementary School. There's approximately $1.8 million left in county funds on that project because we came in under budget. The commissioners did ask that to be allocated to Hancock and Cascade Elementary Schools. We did a small project at Hancock previously, but ultimately wanted to see the roofing project come to fruition. We're actually doing this slightly ahead of schedule because the funds were available and they are time limited because they are bond funds. So we're getting that project done, but we wanted to see this bid come in before we identified future projects because we wanted to make sure we get the roof done first. So, you know, this roughly 1.1 million will take care of that project, roughly about $700,000 left, where we'll be working on additional projects.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We'll go to the vote then, all in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you.
opposed.
Didn't see your, I thought your hand went up. Ms. Rahm is up again.
Good evening. The Board of Education agreed in 2021 to join the class action Jewel Labs, Inc. marketing, sales practices, and products liability litigation. Washington County Public Schools has received a gross settlement offer to resolve the claims against Jewel Labs. The Board of Education must formally approve the settlement offer, after which time deductions for attorney's fees, case costs, and the court order common benefit expense assessment will be made. The Board of Education can expect to receive the net settlement, which has not yet been quite determined, sometime after September 25, 2023. I would request the Board approve the proposed settlement as discussed earlier in closed session.
Is there a motion?
Vice President Stouffer, I move to approve the government entity settlement agreement with Jewel Labs Incorporated.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
But can you, I know we were, we talked about it in the past, would we, would we have to spend the money specifically on vaping-related expenses?
Not specifically. It does need to be used towards students as well as maybe the effects of it or the targeting of the campaigning towards juveniles, but the net effect of this amount of money, it needs to be spent on students.
Got it. Thank you. Very timely topic tonight.
Any other questions, comments? Let's go to the vote then, all in favor of the motion? Okay, thank you. Next is Board of Education FY 2024 General Fund Operating Budget.
Good evening, Mr. Stouffer, members of the board. Dr. Savine, the matter before you this evening is a motion to approve the Board of Education's draft budget as your FY 24 approved budget. To this point, of course, you've had work sessions as this budget was under the superintendent's area of control. Last board meeting, you had a public hearing and also heard from the Budget Advocacy and Review Committee. Staff is here to answer any questions you may have on the budget, but the matter is before you.
Is there a motion?
Vice President Stouffer, I make a motion to approve the Board of Education's FY 2024 General Fund Operating Budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions, comments?
So I struggled with this. You know, we're asking the taxpayers for an extra $8 million compared to what they gave us last year, if I may say that accurately. You know, was it last meeting or meeting before we, we just approved to spend nearly a half a million dollars on a turf field over at Smithsburg, or sorry, a new lighting? You know, it's tough for me to say yes that we need this money when we don't even know where the money came from for that. We were told that other projects were put on hold. Well, what projects aren't as important as a turf, or as new lights over at Smithsburg? You know, don't get me wrong, I played three sports in high school. I love the value that sports provide, but is that what our priority is? And if so, then, you know, what are we missing? I don't understand how we could come back to the taxpayers and ask them for an extra $8 million. And, you know, I struggle with that, you know. I think that, you know, there are fair questions that the community has asked us that I don't think we've really fully answered. So, you know, with that being said, I mean, there are new laws in place between federal or the state minimum wage and the blueprint that are going to require us to significantly increase spending as far as just for pay on top of other things. So, you know, at the same time, you know, we're almost forced to say yes to this, but what do we come back to the taxpayers and say when they say, well, why do we need to go and put in that new stadium over at Smithsburg? You know, that nearly half a million dollars could have went to pay for one classroom parapro for the next five or 10 years, you know? It's, I don't know, I struggle with this.
Anyone else?
Well, I'll explain. I'm going to vote for it mainly because of the priority that, towards the behavior issues that we have. We're funding several new needs that will help in that battle. And also the fact that we want to continue to attract quality teachers. We want to continue to have, we were the first in the state to have universal pre-K, and that's paid off. Our kindergarten readiness scores have gone from one of the lowest in the state to fourth highest in the state. That's an investment that we continue to need to make. And, you know, part of that is we have to give raises to our staff, and I know that's a big part of this budget as well. So this will definitely have a yes for me.
Yes, and I'm going to piggyback off of what Peter said. Also, there's a lot of things coming in blueprint that we are required to do that doesn't come with funding. So that, you know, I'm going to vote for this budget as well, for his reasons as well as for the others.
And I'm not questioning what we're seeing that new money is going towards. I'm just questioning, do we need that new money based on our willie-nawlie, just go ahead and say yes to putting in that turf field when, you know, originally it was supposed to be paid 100% for privately, and now they're getting all kinds of public funds for that, you know? And again, I'm not against the project, but when those funds came up and the question came up, I didn't feel like that was a reasonable request to ask us for that extra money. They could have very easily changed that project and still successfully built the stadium. And, you know, we have, if this is a bare bones budget that we're operating on, how were we able to go and just come up with that? You know, I mean, we're told that it's an absolute calamity if we get a penny less of this $8 million. Well, here we are, just going and putting in the new turf, I mean, sorry, lights. So I just, I just struggle with it.
Anyone else?
Put lights in other stadiums?
We have put lights in other stadiums.
So it's not that we're just putting it at Smithsburg. We have replaced lights in other stadiums.
We have put lights at other stadiums. This is the first set of lights paid for by the Board of Education at Smithsburg, to my knowledge.
The lights out there are the original ones from when they went to nighttime games.
It's my understanding.
Many, several decades ago. And correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection of the Smithsburg deal was the fact that it was a public-private partnership, and the money that we voted on last meeting or the meeting before, I can't remember when, that was money that the Smithsburg boosters, except for the lights, gave us and we put in to our general fund.
That's correct.
And that's where the bulk of the money came from.
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go to the vote, all in favor of the motion to approve-
Thank you again, Mr. Staffer. Matter before you hear is appointment to a Board of Education Advisory Committee as discussed in closed session.
Is there a motion?
Vice President Staffer, I move to approve proposed candidates for membership on one of the Board of Education Advisory Committees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Comments? We'll go to the vote for the motion then, all in favor of the motion to approve these candidates. Please raise your hand. Okay. Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next up, Memorandum of Understanding for Advertising Rights Agreement, Boonsport Athletic Boosters Incorporated.
Thank you again, Mr. Staffer. Board members, a year ago, May 2022, the Board of Education approved a memorandum of understanding with the Boonsport Athletic Boosters Incorporated, which was an advertising rights agreement, the first we have with a booster club in the county. This allows them the authority to seek advertising rights at various identified locations for advertising, for advertisers to sponsor programs where funding goes to the, the booster club to then support programs with our students. At this time, I'm seeking your approval of an amendment to that agreement for advertising rights one and two to reduce the, the ask of those, of those rights. The boosters have found that those rights were more lucrative than they were able to sell and also asking your permission for the advertising right on number one where they do have a donor and they have a proposed signage for the back of the scoreboard.
Is there a motion?
Vice President Staffer, I move to revise advertising rates one and two of the memorandum of understanding with Boonsport Athletic Boosters, Inc., and approve the assignment of advertising one.
Ours are second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any questions or comments to Mr. Prue? None? We'll go to the vote then, all in favor of the motion. Please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, Superintendent's Report.
Mr. Staffer, members of board, last school year was the first time students completed state testing since schools were closed due to pandemic. These assessments give us one look, just one look at the student progress and, and achievement. And we have Dr. Willow, our Associate Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, who will give us a closer look at Washington County's most recent data.
Good evening, Vice President Staffer, members of the Board of Education and Dr. Savine. I'm here tonight to give an overview of the Maryland School Report Card and our spring '22 MCAP results. So a couple of things, just as a reminder, because we haven't had the MCAP assessment or the Maryland Report Card in recent years. The Every Student Succeeds Act is federal and requires each state to submit a plan on how schools are held to be accountable for student learning. It is not the same as Blueprint. Blueprint is state-driven. So when we talk about ESSA and we talk about the Maryland Report Card this evening, we're talking about the, the federal program. It's not Blueprint-related. So the U.S. Department of Education approved Maryland's plan in 2018 and there were two years of Maryland Report Cards, 1718 and then 18 and 19. When the pandemic happened and testing was put on hold, the report card was then stopped and a waiver was submitted to MSDE and we were approved to not have as the state of Maryland to Maryland Report Card. Last year, spring 2022, MCAP testing started up and therefore this year, we now have the Maryland Report Card back. So what do we know about the Maryland Report Card? Each school has the potential to earn up to 100 points. There's actually a range. Some schools will only have 86 and a half points, other schools will have 100, and that's based on the different demographic groups. If a school has an EL population of more than 10 students, then they have a spot on their Maryland Report Card. And that's why sometimes you might see, if you looked on the website, a school that only had 86 and a half points as the denominator versus a school that might have 100. There's a new eighth grade social studies test that will be starting this year. That's also worth three and a half points, but because we don't have that yet till this year, every school was, that was, those three and a half points for middle school were excluded. So that's the difference. As we go through here, you will see that each school basically has the ability to earn points and then stars are awarded. So if I earn 75% of the available points, I'm a five-star school, you can see the range is up on the presentation, four star is 60 to 75 and so on. So how do I earn points as a school? How does Maryland rate us? And there's a couple of areas. We'll start with elementary and middle. One is academic achievement. And again, we're using MCAP data, the number of students that are proficient in both ELA and math, along with an average performance score. That's 20 of the 100 points that I mentioned. In addition, there's a student growth factor. So how did, how did the school perform overall from the last time we gave the assessment to this recent assessment? For that, the state used the fall MCAP data from 2021. We also have progress in achieving English language proficiency. And again, that is our EL students and how much growth they make on their access testing. And again, we talk about that, that is how students exit from the EL program. We are going to have a separate presentation on that in April, but I can share with you that we were in the top five in the state in both elementary, middle, and high. And while I won't share tonight, we were number one in one of those areas. So we have a lot to celebrate. As our EL population has expanded, we have students performing higher on this assessment year after year, which means that they are on their way to being exited from EL services, which is something that, again, we want to celebrate. So that'll be a presentation that'll come in April. As we go through here, we have chronic absenteeism. That's defined as a student that has missed more than 10% of the school year. And so again, the school has looked at how many students were chronically absent. If I go through here, there is a school survey. Both students and staff are surveyed. We just, I think, gave those survey results. A lot of schools have given it here in the past week or so. Some will be giving it to staff on these professional learning days coming up at the end of March and early April. So seven points out of the 10 are based on the student results and three points out of 10 are based on staff results, and that's what the school survey. Access to well-rounded curriculum. This is very important. Percentage of fifth and eighth grade students that are enrolled in science, social studies, fine arts, physical education, and health. So we got a score for that, but we also then get the credit for completion. So it's not just having access to those courses, but it's also successfully passing those courses. So the high school, what is different? Academic achievement in ELA and math is 30 points instead of 20 points. There is also a high school graduation rate that's assigned to the schools. And then the other big change is on track in ninth grade. And what we mean by on track in ninth grade is the, again, the percentage of ninth graders that are passing English, math, science, and social studies. If the student is enrolled in a world language, then they have to pass four out of five. And so that is how, again, every school, looking at the failure rate, gets a score on that. If I went through here, nothing else, all of these categories are very similar to elementary and middle with what we presented earlier. So how did we do overall? So this was a, from the state board presentation that occurred in March. It is the distribution of stars by LEA. Again, the goal would be to see all schools, you know, perform at the highest level possible, five stars. But we are one of, we are in the minority. We have no one or two-star schools. We do have some three-star, we do have the majority of four-star and five-star. I think there's a couple of things to keep in mind that, that Dr. Savine shared. This is, again, one measurement, a snapshot in time of how that school performed. It is not uncommon, again, this is report card number three, to see a school go up a star, potentially go down a star. And we'll talk about some of the successes that we have when we look at our data, but we'll also talk about some of the opportunities here in a later slide that we have to improve on.
And Dr. Willow, appreciate you emphasizing the, the fact that this is one measure, simply one point in time. And while we are a part of a minority in a good way, I believe there are only 10 school districts that had the categories of just three, four, and five of them. So that is a positive thing, but this board, along with our Board of Commissioners in a joint meeting, heard that we are the number one rated school district in terms of apprenticeship programs. Certainly, that speaks to developing a skilled workforce to support our local workforce. That's just one example. I know earlier today, the investment was mentioned regarding preschool and the fact that we have now kindergarten readiness, readiness assessments that are in those top tiers as opposed to where we once were at the, at the end lagging. Certainly, those are just two additional examples of how Washington County Public Schools, thanks to the support of this board, the Board of Commissioners, and our very talented staff are, are leading the way in the state of Maryland.
Thank you, Dr. Savine. Let's talk a little bit about MCAP data. A couple of things that I'd want to share with you that I think are important. First, this is the first year we've given the new MCAP assessment. So we have no prior, while we can see how we performed previously, it's not the same assessment, okay? So this is an updated assessment. This is a very rigorous assessment. Let me give you an example. 10th grade prompts are at a 1,500 Lexile. So when we talk about a 1,500 Lexile, you are talking about college-level material that we're asking 10th graders to be able to read, interpret, and respond to. With that being said, there are some successes, but there's also some opportunities here. One of the things that I would share with math in particular, and again, when we look at this, this is Math 3 all the way through Math 8 to Algebra 1. I've chosen to highlight the Level 2 performances. Now, where we'd like to see every student get to is Level 3 or higher. And you might say, well, gosh, we had a lot of twos, which is what sticks out. So what is it, again, looking at the data to go deeper, what is it about our students where we didn't quite get to Level 3? And what is the difference even between a two and a three? What we're talking about there with the group that's highlighted, several of them were literally only a question or two away from a Level 3. And we looked further at this details in CNI when we went into it by question and when we were able to break down. So what is it that, what's holding our students back? We're ninth in the state overall, but you can't be satisfied when you're ninth in the state and this is the proficiency rate. So what is it that's holding us back from getting more students to that proficiency level? And what it comes down to is it's modeling and reasoning for math. So it's not just being able to solve the problem, it's being able to apply it to a real-world scenario and then be able to explain it. That's our area for growth. That's our opportunity. With that being said, as we look deeper at the data, our students have the knowledge background necessary to answer a lot of these questions. That's important because we're going back to a year ago where honestly, for two years there, we had students learning in all types of different modalities, some online, some in front of us, and we were wondering what was going to be the impact of the pandemic. And there is an impact, but it's not to the level that we can't overcome. And so when we look at that, that's important. And I want to go to ELA for a second. And you can see where we rank as a county compared to other counties. When you look at ELA, it's the same thing, but ELA gave us another lens to look at the data. We can see how students performed in reading versus how they performed in writing. And our students performed very well in reading. Unfortunately, we had a number of students score the minimum in writing. Now, there's typically a way of how I score a minimum. I can earn up to 11 points on an essay. If I didn't earn any points on my essay, there's a good likelihood, and again, this is a state assessment where it did not have any impact on the student, that I either skipped the essay or I didn't attempt it, or I might have wrote one line. And so students, oftentimes, we don't get that level of detail back. Teachers now have that level of detail, we've shared this with principals, to be able to start having conversations. Because when we look and we go further, just to give you an example of what we're talking about here, in third grade alone, 40% of our students got zero points on the writing. If I went into fourth grade, 25, fifth grade, 32, and if I kept going there, the numbers, it's usually about a third, and yet we're still very close to passing the test, which means we have students that performed very well in the reading areas, but when it came to the writing, didn't get any points. And again, for those of you that have worked in a classroom or you're familiar, sometimes when students know the test doesn't mean anything to them, sometimes when presented with that opportunity and the teacher can't see what I've done, I'm going to hit submit on that. That's not everyone, though. And that's the important piece of taking a look at data and going back and having the individual conversations, right?
And Dr. Willow, thank you for, for emphasizing the individual conversations. And you referenced the work with our, our principals and our work with our teachers to unpack this information, but you look at those students that were on the performance level 2. I know you referenced with multiple choice reading, many of them did really well, but since it was a test that it really didn't matter, what you found, you and, and curriculum instruction team members, was that many of those students simply did not try the writing prompt. I think the most important thing is what are we doing with that information in terms of the conversations we're having with students so that there's a change in that process and, and certainly our focus on, on improving student scores from that standpoint? What, what's occurring in terms of conversations with students to kind of ask the questions so that we can get their feedback to make sure that there's a strong effort to demonstrate their written skills in this upcoming, the next assessment?
Absolutely. And I think that starts with what we talked about earlier when I was up here, that one-on-one small group conversation where I can pull Ms. Murray up and we can look at her results on the assessment. Parents are also going to get access to these scores on March 30th. The report is going home to each parent to be able to see how their child did in the reading section, the writing section, for math, the content knowledge, the modeling, the reasoning, so that you can also have that conversation at home. What we want to be able to do is identify if there is an area of weakness and work to turn it into a strength. That's really, it goes back to what we do as educators, it's no different than what we talked about, coaches working with students, celebrating athletes earlier this evening, right? It's identifying a weakness and working with the student. It is not a one-size-fits-all approach, but we do know that motivation is a huge part of student achievement and making sure that students give their best. I think any principal or assistant principal or teacher or lead teacher or our paraprofessionals that work with students, what we ask is do your best. And then from there, let us work with your weaknesses. I am confident that when I rattle off those percentages, that is not an accurate representation. I could see if we were talking about only earning a few points, right? Four out of 11, five out of 11, but when you've earned zero out of 11, right? That typically will go to a lack of effort, especially when you're reading at the grade level and you're able to read those advanced prompts, but then when it came to the writing, didn't choose to. So I think the best thing that we could do is actually break the data to this level, have conversations with students, bring our parents into it, and if there are potential concerns, let's work together to address them. Okay, so let's talk about our strengths overall. When you look at, as a county, you know, where are, where are we doing well at? You know, where are we progressing? Student growth was one area where we, when you look at the Maryland Report Card and you look at our schools, our schools performed well, meaning the last time we gave this assessment to this pastime, spring 2022. And I think we can see that overall. Again, we were a top 10 county in math, ELA. We beat the state average in every grade level except for one, which we tied, that was sixth grade ELA. Our English language proficiency When you look as a county, you know, where are we doing well at? Where are we progressing? Student growth was one area where we, when you look at the Maryland Report Card and you look at our schools, our schools performed well, meaning the last time we gave this assessment, this pastime, spring 2022. And I think we can see that overall. Again, we were a top 10 county in math, ELA. We beat the state average in every grade level except for one, which we tied. That was sixth grade ELA. Our English language proficiency scores were very, were very good. I would say access to completion of well-rounded curriculum. Many of our students take art, they take music, they take the health classes that are required. And not only access, but they complete them. And so when you go through, and if you were to look at a specific school, you would see most of our schools did very well in the access and completion. Our staff survey is also, tends to be a strength. And again, as we shared, I think at our last board meeting, our graduation rate continues to outperform the state average. What are areas for growth and probably what concerns many educators, many school administrators, teachers, we have a conversation of student attendance. Unfortunately, even this year, we are still not seeing the levels rebound to where we were at pre-pandemic. And again, I think there's probably a couple of reasons. But one thing that I always want to point out, yes, we know things happen. Students get sick. But coming back and getting a worksheet and completing it and turning it in for a grade is not the same as being in school, participating in the learning, okay? One is more compliance, learning on your own. The magic to the classroom for most students is being a part of those classroom discussions. It's engaging with the teacher, it's engaging with your peers. When we talk about percentage of students that have missed more than 10% of the school year, that is way too high. And it's not just us, it's across the state. But you think about what that means. That means the equivalent of missing one day every two weeks, okay? And you think about what impact, six hours, seven hours. Now, at the end of the month, I've missed 28 hours of school, all right? I multiply that out over 10 months, 280 hours of school. Again, it's great when we have people out and they come and they make up that work, but we can't confuse the two, completing work on your own and saying that's the equivalent of being in school. So that's an opportunity. I know our principals have been working with students to get more information on student survey. Again, this is an area for growth across the state, areas where, you know, just the condition of buildings comes up, you know, and how you're involved in your school. And I know several of our high school principals, and I believe middle and elementary as well, have been meeting with their SGA's, groups of students, to review the student survey data and to learn more about how we can improve our culture and our environment in buildings. Again, even though we were top 10 for overall proficiency rate in ELA and math, we see a lot of potential to only go up. And then another area is also looking at on-track in ninth grade. And this shouldn't come as a shock. We presented last year, failures for high school in particular, the need for additional summer school. If you think back to some of those reports we did, you know, there's an opportunity there to improve that as well. So certainly want to thank our teachers, our school administrators, the Division of Curriculum, the leadership team that's in the back of the room. There are things to celebrate here. And usually, when you look at data, there, you know, there is good news here. But there are still opportunities. And again, you know, at the end of a game, the end of a week of practice, good teams look and they look to figure out, how do we adjust and continue to improve? And I think there are certainly data points that we can continue to build off of as well.
Thank you, Dr. Willow. And I just want to, before we conclude, spend just a moment on this slide because Dr. Willow and I have spent quite a bit of time along with other team members and certainly our school-level team members. And we're very proud of the strengths there. We certainly look forward to in April, the English language proficiency reports where we are leading in many areas of the state with those student performances. And certainly, we give a shout out to our English language teachers and the work that they're doing in our outreach centers to support the needs of our parents and families. But I know, we've had a conversation, you mentioned on-track in ninth grade, and in terms of growth areas, and in particular, student attendance. You know, we find when students are there, we do really well with them, but it's, we're at a disadvantage. Our teachers are at a disadvantage when students are not there. I know this past week, we had the state superintendent out for a full day. And one of the things that he heard consistently from our principals and others was that, you know, there was a change at the state level that presented a challenge in terms of the support, in terms of attendance. I know as a school district, we feel very strongly regarding the importance of partnering with parents and school attendance matters. But I want you to kind of speak a little bit more on the student survey because I think there's an opportunity there to learn from our students, and that is an area of growth.
I'll probably go back here to one of my earlier slides just to highlight some of the topics that are included in the school survey. So we, for high school, it is students in grades nine, 10, and 11. Seniors do not take the survey. For middle school, it is grades 6, 7, and 8. And for elementary school, it is only fifth graders that complete the survey. And again, the idea behind it is the age appropriateness. There's nothing in there but asking a kindergarten to a student or first grader to rate how they feel about their building, condition of their building. Most time, those students don't even fully, you know, recognize what the conditions might be in the building. So when we talk about what is in the survey, it really includes topics on safety, topics on instruction, the physical environment, what we talked about, student engagement, relationships, student-to-student relationships, student-to-staff relationships. I feel like I'm a part of the school. And I want to be clear, we didn't do poorly in all of these areas. We just see this as an opportunity to get better. And again, it's, it can look different by building. Some schools went up with their student survey, but overall, we see it as an opportunity to improve. So I think it takes about a half an hour to complete. And typically, again, it's those types of topics that are listed there.
Thank you, Dr. Willow. Mr. Staff, for members of the board, that concludes our report. Certainly remain available to answer any questions. We welcome comments from board.
I just have one quick question. How many times has the state passed the standardized testing in the last decade? At least twice, or maybe three times?
How many, I don't think I heard the first part. How many times did they change it? Is that what you asked?
There's this now, MCAP. And then before, it was the Pearson thing.
Yep, Park.
What was it?
Park Assessments.
Park and the HSA.
Yeah, P-A-R-C-C. So.
So, yeah, there's, I mean, I could go back and think of, you know, just off the top of my head, HSA's, Park, MCAP, Missap. Yeah, so, you know, I think for this, it was more of an update. And part of the change isn't a bad thing, but what they were attempting to do was shorten the length of the assessments. And because of that, they changed the scoring of the assessments and removed questions. And I think most people would agree, you don't need to have all of these assessments to get a sense of where a student's at. And so really, they were responding to the needs of what they were hearing from local school systems. Hey, this test doesn't need to be four sessions at 90 minutes. Let's see if we can take it to three sessions at 90 minutes, or whatever it may be. But anytime you make that type of change, it's going to throw off your scoring scale. The other thing that caused a lot of impact is obviously the pandemic. And so the results, I mean, we typically get results, students take it in the spring, we get the results in the summer. We work with educators throughout the summer into the fall. We took this assessment last April and May, and we just received the results here in February. So, I mean, you think about how late that came back. It's still important to have the conversations. It can't be completely dismissed. But it's also like going back a year ago and judging your academic performance. A lot can change in a year. And so, especially with the year that we were coming out of. So, again.
So, sorry, I'm not interrupting you. Am I saying? Can I go?
Yeah.
So.
Sure.
So to kind of piggy, or go back to the question about, you know, the effort, you know, some kids may have or whatever. Honestly, I'm not surprised, you know, being a former teacher myself. I watched that frequently. How reliable do you think a lot? And I know some of those are actually reliable because you can physically see what the attendance is. You can see that. But how reliable do you think those overall numbers are?
Well, I think you can take, if you're talking about overall stars.
Yeah.
And five star and four star. I mean, I think all of that is always up to interpretation, you know? Is 75% a good representation of five stars? Is, you know, 60% a good representation of four stars? Ultimately, this is what our state has put together and has been proved by the U.S. Department of Education as a way to show how different schools are performing overall. I think, again, I think you have to look at it on a school-by-school basis. I think there is some good data in there, is attendance, number of students. I think one of my favorites that I share is access to well-rounded curriculum because I'm a firm believer that you have to have access. Obviously, as we've talked with curriculum, all of us are, making sure that students are provided access to the arts, to CTE, to that. So some of that is good data. The MCAP assessment, I don't know that we can invest a lot of, on one assessment that's in its first year with new scores. But I also don't think, I think it would be irresponsible to completely dismiss it. So I think each of those different points, Mr. Evans, you know, probably are, some are more concrete than others. And so because of that, the overall score certainly can be influenced.
And so, you know, that was going to kind of be my question. Not necessarily that I'm advocating for or whatever, more kind of curiosity. Like, I'm not saying we should completely dismiss the assessment, but, you know, if we have other assessments available within ourselves that are better, then is it worth taking the time analyzing it? Yes, you want to look at it and not completely dismiss it. But would it be time better spent to go and look at other assessments that we have? And then, you know, at the same time, I saw some material, go ahead on that part first.
No, you're talking, I've got to smile because this is the kind of stuff that we do as a Division of Curriculum. So we took these results and we wanted to compare it to how students were performing on our local assessments. So for example, we give the reading inventory. I've presented up here before on math inventory scores. Or in some cases, we have our school interim assessments that we talk about, right? And so we wanted to be able to see, is there a correlation between our assessments and, you know, the state assessment? But more importantly, again, it's going a little further. It's looking at the individual standards that are being assessed as well, right? And so not just the overall scores, but can you take it down to where we're testing on the same standards and we can see comparison data? The answer right now is, yes, there are some comparisons. Again, though, it's dangerous to say it's a trend off of just one year of assessment data. What we're encouraged is that this spring, we're supposed to be able to see the results come June or July. Now we have two years of assessment data, and I'd probably feel more comfortable when I'm up here in the fall again presenting to you to be able to better answer that when we have more data to look at it that way.
And so last question, the one that I was going to ask there. Are there any benefits that we get from the state or anything like that as far as what we get that would kind of incentivize us to spend more time to go and put a little more pressure on the kids or whatever? And if so, what would those incentives be?
Well, so we'll talk about the individual student benefits. So when a student is not on track, and this is where Blueprint now will start to come in. When a student is not on track to be CCR, meaning that they're, they have not demonstrated.
This test to tell us that, there's other things.
There's other things, but the law actually in Blueprint defines it as a passing score on MCAP. So the ultimate is, so we have a student that has not seen proficiency on MCAP. That's where we're required to get into supplemental instruction to be able to meet the individual needs of the student. That's also, if you think back to our program of studies presentation, where we get into the different pathways from CTE to the dual-credit, 60-credit pathways, that if a student still can access those pathways, but we have to demonstrate the supplemental support that we're giving them. From a school standpoint, we do receive funding for every student that ends up being CCR. And again, the idea there is to be able to offset some of those costs that come with paying for dual credit. That only applies to high school, though. And again, that is new, just to offset some of the cost of trying to, you know, with all of the new expenses of paying for textbooks, college tuition, that kind of stuff. So the state did try to offset some of that cost. But unfortunately, you're talking, you know, like $400 a student. That doesn't pay for one course, so.
$17,000 we spend.
Yeah. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Willow.
More update?
Mr. Staff, members of the board, that completes my report segment for tonight. However, I do have a few updates I'd like to share with the board and the public. We've recently heard during public comment, concerns regarding staffing at Clear Spring High School, in particular, the band program. And as you are well aware, staff has completed a review of staffing needs of all high schools, including Clear Spring High School. And the current staffing allocation appropriately and equitably addresses the band's, band program's needs. More specifically, a comprehensive review of staffing needs in all subject areas across the county at the high school level was conducted in the fall by our Associate Superintendent for Administration and Leadership and our Secondary Executive Director of, or actually Executive Director of Secondary Education. Both of them worked in collaboration with our principals. In the case of Clear Spring, the band program, an additional review has occurred. And I want to thank our Clear Spring Principal, Amanda Mulady, as well as our Executive Director of Secondary Education, Dr. Heath Wilcox. Once again, I want to emphasize that Dr. Wilcox, in a previous educational life, was a former band director of South High School in Boonsboro, Ohio. Dr. Wilcox, along with our supervisor, Visual Arts, Visual and Performing Arts, you heard from him earlier today, Micah Sox. As we recognize many of our talented music and performing arts students, Mr. Sox is a Clear Spring Band alumni, very proud alumnus, and also a former Hancock and Boonsboro Band Director. So I would like to thank, excuse me. I would like to thank Dr. Wilcox and Mr. Sox for spending time last week with the Clear Springs Band boosters. Also, citizens, community members were invited to attend. They answered questions, I think spent nearly two hours answering questions and also talking about the process that we went through at, in all of our high schools. And we did a second review because of some of the concerns that have been expressed there. I'll just say that while this is done on an annual basis and recognize that this was not done the last couple of years because of the pandemic. It was an unusual time. But districts that efficiently look at staffing and make adjustments because each year demands change in terms of student interest and so forth, just want to emphasize that while adjustments have been made in all of our high schools based on course request and so forth, we monitor this on an annual basis. And certainly, if there are changes that occur and increases in student interest in the band program at Clear Spring, then there's certainly an opportunity to increase some of the staffing. But the reality is, the staffing in terms of the band program at Clear Spring is very little to no different from what is currently in place to next year. We certainly value, and I want to emphasize this, that we value our elective and core content programs offered in each of our high schools. And in our staffing review, we feel confident that our Clear Spring Band program is appropriately staffed based on the needs of students and positioned to experience continued success in the future. I also want to mention that, want to celebrate a staff recognition that's observed actually next month, but it occurs before our next board meeting. So I'd like to take this. So, I'd like to take this opportunity that, you know, on Monday, April the third, it is Pair Professional Appreciation Day, and our pair professionals are the right-hand persons to support our teachers and students across our, our county. They are instrumental in student learning. They work individually with students and in small groups to make sure the material is understood. They are true educators, and we benefit greatly from our pair professionals. We thank all of our pair professionals for supporting our students and contributing to our, our, our students' achievements. Also, I wanted to share a calendar reminder for later this month. This is, there will be actually no school for students on next Friday. As you can see here, Friday, March the thirty-first, that is a professional learning day for teachers. So, some of our staff will still be in their schools for that day, but again, there is no school for students next Friday, March the thirty-first. And yesterday was the first day of, of spring, and we want to put winter behind us, so I thought I would make an announcement that gets us thinking more towards, towards summertime. We had two inclement weather days this school year, so the tentative last day of school for students will be Wednesday, June the seventh. Students will be dismissed two and a half hours early that day. The last day for teachers will be Thursday, June the eighth. As long as we don't call any additional inclement weather cancellations, the last day of school for students will be Wednesday, June the seventh, and students will be dismissed two and a half hours early on that day.
Just jinxed it.
I did, did not. I'm hoping that we're safe enough, we're in spring.
I don't know, where I come from, they, they get snowstorms in the middle of April still, so...
Mr. Staffer, members of the board, that completes my update. I mean, open to comments or questions on the board.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the superintendent before we move on? All right, Dr. Webster, personnel actions.
Good evening, Mr. Staffer, members of the board, and Dr. Sevigny. As discussed earlier during closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Is there a motion?
Vice President Staffer, I move to approve the personnel actions dated Tuesday, March twenty-first, 2023, as presented in the closed session.
Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Any questions, comments? We'll move to the vote. All in favor of the personnel report? Thank you, passed unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Webster. Next up, our Deputy Legal Counsel, Ms. Erst sprung, gonna talk about the 2023 Maryland Legislative Session. And I'll say this before we start, I hope everybody had a chance to see or to read the update that she provided in her packets about the session.
Thank you for that.
Good evening, board members, and Dr. Sevigny. We have officially reached crossover day. Yesterday was the day by which a bill that is introduced in one chamber has to cross over to the other chamber to guarantee a bill hearing in that chamber. That's the process that the bill needs to take to be passed by the full body. If a bill didn't cross over, it does not mean that it can't, it just is a tougher road for that, for any bills that didn't cross over by yesterday evening. A hearing in the other committee doesn't mean a vote in the other committee, so bills that cross over can still peter out and, and die, but they have a better chance of, of moving forward if they've passed. We are tracking more than three hundred and twenty bills, somewhere between just under three thirty, and approximately a third of the bills that we're tracking did cross over. I'm gonna go over each of those bills now. I'm kidding, I'm gonna go over like ten. As is always the case, we see a lot of curriculum bills. Most of the curriculum bills are stuck in committee and have not crossed over. The one that has crossed is House Bill 461, which would require that we include in our health curriculum materials promoting the awareness and prevention of human sex trafficking. And that would be for students in grade six through eight. So that one's still moving, we'll see what happens. The other one that has moved is House Bill 119. You'll probably hear a lot about this one. It started as a curriculum bill that would require that school boards follow the health curriculum that has been developed by the State Board and other entities. It was then amended to no longer deal with the health curriculum and instead give the state superintendent broad authority over all curricular matters concerning school systems. So the state superintendent, if this bill passes, would be able to determine if a school board is not following the guidelines for any curriculum. And if that determination is made and the corrections are not made to the state superintendent's liking, up to twenty percent of funding can be withheld from a school board. So this is a big bad bill at this point, and the legislative response team has authorized written opposition, which we're working on. We will submit that, along with the opposition from MAB, PZAM. The State Board has actually come out and said that they are not in favor of this bill, so we're hoping that there will be enough opposition that it will just sit and squander in the, in the Senate. There were two labor relation bills that we were looking at. One is House Bill eighty-five that I mentioned last time, that would make class size a permissive topic of bargaining. The other is Senate Bill 367, which would kind of be a full-scale change on how unions in the state can, can act, from how they can be formed, all the way through dispute resolution, resolution processes. Both of those bills are stuck in the original chambers, neither of those crossed over, so that's a good sign for us, that they, they might not have the momentum to, to make it to the finish line. The Time to Care Act, which was passed last session, our bill that we requested from our delegation never, never was filed, but there was a bill that came into play from the original sponsor, just to make some corrections. And some of the things that, that this new bill that has been amended will do is delay the implementation timelines. So, in the original bill, contributions from the employer and employees would begin as of January first, 2024. That date has been pushed back to October first of 2024. Benefits will be able to be paid as of January first, 2026, and the Secretary of Labor will have to adopt regulations by January first, 2024. The regulations will provide some information as to what a employer needs to do in order to be exempted from the law, because they have their own private program. So, we were very interested in having that, those regulations known, so that if we were interested in pursuing something either through a MAB or another insurance provider, that we know what we need to, to meet the standards. The amendments to this bill also set the contribution amount for employers and employees to be no more than one point two percent of an employee's wage. The final rate will be set by October first of 2023, and it will be reviewed every two years. And the contribution split between employers and employees will be fifty-fifty, whereas the original bill said it could be anywhere between seventy-five, twenty-five, either way. So those, those amounts are set through this amendment, which likely will pass, it has the support of the Department of Labor. And they actually asked for deadlines that were further extended than what MAB was gonna ask for, so that was kind of a, a win, as far as we were concerned. Virtual school bills came back, that mimics a lot of what last year's had, no real surprise there, it's moving on, it likely will pass. There were two bills about the blueprint, one, House Bill eleven ninety-six, would provide funding for the implementation coordinator position for two years, so that would be, you know, nice for the budget. And House Bill seven seventy, which alters the definition of a tier-one and tier-two child for funding for pre-K. So again, that would just kind of give a boost to our, our budget if that was, if a broader group of children were brought under that, those titles. Student health bill, there's House Bill eight seventy-eight, which is a bill that requires that the school provide a space for students to engage in telehealth appointments. This one's a little complicated, it would be good for students, it might be hard for the schools to implement logistically. So we're keeping an eye on it, we'll, we'll see how it plays out. MAB and PZAM have both opposed it because of the logistical concerns that it presents. So, that one, it's, it's of interest, but not something that's, that we're gonna take any action on right now. There are a couple of special education bills. House Bill two ninety-four would shift the burden of proof in a due process hearing to the school, whereas now it's currently on whoever initiates the, the complaint. And House Bill twelve thirty-seven would allow the court to award expert witness fees to a parent if they prevailed in a special education matter. These both represent a pretty large shift in the special education system that's currently in place in Maryland and has been for a long time. It would require probably some operational changes, and there'd be some increased costs if these were to pass. MAB and PZAM are both opposing them for those reasons, and we are keeping an eye on them and, and will make the necessary changes if they were to pass. Again, this is one that we're just kind of tracking pretty closely. Last meeting, I told you that we submitted, the legislative response team submitted on behalf of the board, testimony on House Bill four eighty-five, which alters a, a current law that requires the state superintendent to provide approval for construction projects. And the, the threshold for the projects where they needed the approval was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it had been that for twenty-plus years. The original bill was asking for it to be increased to five hundred thousand, and we supported with the amendment that it should be a million dollars, and it was amended to a million dollars. So whether it was our testimony or not, we got what we asked for, so that was, that was nice, it's moving forward with that increased threshold. House Bill one thirty-seven is one that, that MAB has supported, and it guarantees civil immunity for educators that intervene in an altercation between students, as long as certain conditions are met. And that's something that the MSEA has really been interested in, just to provide a level of comfort to those educators who are having to become involved in these altercations that are becoming unfortunately more, more common in schools. And then, the last bill I wanted to mention was Senate Bill one twenty-one, which, it's called More Opportunities for Career-Focused Students. It's actually a refile from a bill last year, and it would require the school system to just have some parity between students who are on a track to continue with higher education and students who are on a track to enter the job, the job field, to tech, you know, tech students. Pretty much if we're paying for some costs for students who are gonna pursue higher education, you'd also have to pay for light costs for students who are maybe going to take some, attempt to get a certificate of some sort, some sort of qualification for the field that they're gonna enter into. So, I think it goes along with our tech programs and, and the value that we place on workforce readiness and, and, as opposed to just higher education. So that one is, is moving forward, it crossed over, so we'll see how that progresses. Sinidei is April tenth, which is just about twenty days, it's twenty days away. So we're gonna continue to monitor bills, everything's gonna move pretty rapidly from here on out as, as the two chambers try to amend bills and come to agreement on terms and everything else. I'll provide updates as necessary and as I can, and then I'll be back after the session is over to let you know what passed and what we're gonna have to do as a result of that.
Real quick question, I attend these meetings like you do, I still have never understood how the last House Bill there, one thousand one fourteen, would remove current students from the group of individuals who can be charged with willfully disturbing the orderly conduct of the activities, administration, or classes? That sounds to me like we can't do anything about them? What, it says current students? I've never understood that.
So what it is attempting to do is remove, right now, a student can be criminally charged with willful misconduct, willful... So, it's, it's removing the criminal charge. The student can still be disciplined under the code of conduct. If, whatever the, the incident was, rises to the level of some other crime, if it was assault, if it was something like that, they could still be charged under that statute. They just aren't able to be charged criminally for throwing papers around a room and disrupting a class. And it applies only to students, not to guests on school grounds, so if a parent came in and caused a major scene, they could still be charged under that, that section of the law.
Maybe that'll stall in the Senate, too. Anybody, questions?
I was just curious.
The, you said the delegation didn't file a bill we requested them to file. Was that likely because they didn't support it, or was it because they knew somebody else was gonna file it?
They sent it to bill drafting, and the, what we heard was that the bill drafting was really backed up this year, there actually are fewer bills presented than has been the case. So, last we heard, it was still at bill drafting, and, and I don't know if it ever came out of that. But, there were some similarities, we were asking that we either be exempted from the bill, from the requirements of the Time to Care Act, or require that funding be provided. So the bill that, that's moving doesn't quite do that, but the general consensus, I guess, in Annapolis was that bills that would have some sort of exemption for certain organizations were not looked favorably upon. So it might have been a combination of it being returned to the delegation late and realizing that there was little chance that it would pass.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Regarding House Bill, I think it was House Bill one nineteen, the one that pretty much gives state superintendent, you know, dictatorship, for lack of a better phrase, has he came out and said anything about that specifically, or do you not know?
I have not heard any, any statement that he's made in regard to the bill.
Reaching the State Board, it's against it.
The State Board came out and said that they don't think it's necessary, that... Yeah.
Delegate Ado Berry's behind that, she's one of the post our reportable offensive bill several times. But I asked that question in the meeting, you heard me, I said, what's the motive behind this, to John Woolham's? And he said, well, he said, I said, we don't need this right now because of all the demands of the blueprint and everything, and then we can lose more money perhaps, and all of this. And his answer was, well, it came out because one school board and maybe two others, and a school board two counties to the east of us, this is my wording now, basically shot their mouth off, and so now, everybody's gonna get punished instead of just that county that shot their mouth off and wasn't smart enough to figure out how to handle teaching curriculum and meeting their demands of their citizens and still meeting state demands, and that's why we're getting punished. It's a dangerous bill.
It is, and there was opposition, when House Bill one nineteen had its hearing with the Ways and Means Committee, it was still its original bill, which was just to implement the state health guidelines. It was Delegate Ado Berry who introduced the full-scale amendments. I mean, the original bill is completely stricken, and a new bill is in its place. She believes that what she's, what she has in there only codifies what the state superintendent is already allowed to do. And we contend that it's, it goes far beyond what the current powers of the state superintendent are. So there's a, a little bit of a disconnect, she doesn't think that it's, it's expanding the powers of the state superintendent at all, and we believe it, it is, and the State Board apparently also believes that it is, because in their statement, they said that, that it was unnecessary, and...
I don't know how true it is, but I heard the state superintendent helped draft the bill in its current state.
He may have been involved, there's been no, you know, public statement as to, as to who was involved in drafting those amendments.
Obviously, there wouldn't be, but yeah.
But it's definitely one to keep an eye on.
Yeah.
It still wouldn't have been done if they'd have kept their mouth shut down the road, I don't think. It wouldn't have gotten to the point where it is. Is that it? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. That was great.
All right. Board member committee reports will start down here.
All right. Curriculum and Instruction will meet March 30th at Boonsborough High School at 1 o'clock. We'll look at some resources for Spanish and math. No, yes. And look at Boonsborough CTE programs, which I'm always a big fan of. Your turn, Mr. Evans.
Mr. Evans? We met here yesterday, and we discussed many things. I guess really the biggest thing, and Mr. Bickford, you can look forward to discussion of Policy ND, which talks about how we dispose of equipment that is deemed, you know, beyond repair, or whatever it may be, talking about how we go about that. So that was the big thing. I don't know if, Stan, Linda, if you guys think there's anything other that we really talked about that was really no, mostly boring stuff, but...
Mr. Gassford?
Sorry, Jeff.
Facilities has nothing to report this time.
Mr. Bickford?
Policy's never boring. We're meeting this Thursday at 1 PM in the board conference room. We've done some stakeholder surveys around the valedictorian issue that we'll be getting reported on. And we are also discussing educational equity, early admissions to pre-K, kindergarten and first grade, and student search and seizure arrest and questioning on school property.
Ms. Murray?
I have nothing.
Ms. Grue?
Tomorrow, I'll be going to Maryland Association of Student Council's convention, which Washington County, which our county SGA helped plan. WCPS staff helped us print a whole bunch of stuff for it, and they helped us out a lot. So we're super excited to be hosting, and I can't wait to see like what Maryland has to offer when it comes to leadership.
Where's it being held?
It's in Ocean City.
Ocean City?
Yeah.
Nice.
Have fun.
Thanks.
Okay, future agenda items. You saw the list. I'm not going to go over it. You can clap for me. All right, okay. Board member comments will start down here.
Okay. In 1947, a new superintendent came to town, and he was a visionary, much like you, Dr. Savine. I met Dr. Bush when I was five years old as I was lounging under the swing that he was swinging on. And he looked down and said, "What are you going to do with your life?" And I said, "I'm going to have your job." And he said, "Well, why don't you be a teacher first?" Which was good advice. This month, and I know my dad will find out that I stole his Cracker Barrel, features instructional TV in Washington County. And if you are a Washington County baby, you probably had CCTV. It was wonderful. It was virtual school, but you got to be in school. And there's nothing new under the sun. Our leadership team has come up with ABLE, one of our, one of the state's premier thriving virtual schools. We made it through COVID with virtual TV, and now we have a backup plan for snow days. So thanks to everybody, and I wonder what they'll say about you in 50 years.
Mr. Evans? I had quite a bit on my mind, but honestly, we lost our audience. And all this talk about the Cracker Barrel made me hungry, so.
Mr. Gassford?
I have nothing for tonight.
I'll just say one thing. I want to thank Mrs. Smith, the counselor at Eastern. It allowed me to shadow her last week. I forget what day it was. But I thank her for her time, and we had time to have a nice conversation.
And I'd like to thank the staff at Jonathan Hager for inviting us to the Wax Museum Night. That was a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun.
It was great. I met Madame Curie.
I know. I met Neil Armstrong.
I did, too.
And there were a lot of Queen Elizabeths there. Did you notice? It was a very fun night.
First or the second?
Second.
Oh, okay.
First sentiments again. Mr. Bickford, it was a fun evening, and I was so thankful to be invited and to see my fellow board members there. So that's all I have.
I was able to meet the state superintendent last Thursday, and he's so nice. And I was also able to show off Bisfo. Like, I took him on every floor. And if you've ever been to Bisfo, each floor, there are five floors, and each floor is a different department. And I got him to walk up all those stairs. I like warned him beforehand. I was like, "We're going to be climbing. Are you okay with that?" He's like, "Yeah, let's do it." So we went all the way up to Visual Arts, which overlooks Hagerstown. And then we went from there. He saw the theater and the kilns and the darkroom. And it was just a really fun experience.
What else? All right. Thank you all for sticking. You had to, didn't you? We're adjourned.